Knows about fabric and all that, so I would be funny with that. Okay, so one thing I did want to bring up that kind of mind to do something is um. So there's cattle guards. I wasn't familiar with them, but some of you probably are. So it'd be Third Avenue Southwest. It's on like a half section line. It's cut across by Max Gross's out there. Jerome Mossit, I'm not, he either rents or owns that line. And um. There's two, there's actually four cattle guards in the road. As you can see, it was welded in there nineteen sixty-four. And so. Jerome had called me and he said he had talked to Skylar and Skylar didn't know nothing about it, which obviously from agreement from nineteen sixty-four, not a lot of people are familiar with it, but. Apparently, these cattle guards are the responsibility of the counties. And it was all part of a way to secure easement, to build this road. So the agreement was basically stated that hey, you can build this road through here, but you gotta put cattle guards in so they don't have to fence all this stuff. So. I talked to Al Holm and Gar Schmidt, because they're kind of our elder statesmen in the road department, and they said that yeah, they remembered that Nick would have them go out every. Probably been ten years since something's been done out there. And they would go and they would pull the tops off and clean it out with the excavator or whatever. So apparently, so this was, these were both pretty full. Jerome's pretty desperate to get something done, so I went out with my hydro back and just cleaned it out. Just, I got it usable so that cattle weren't getting, they were getting out like three times a day. I mean, it was pretty bad. So it was easier for me to just run out there with that because it pulls behind my pickup. I just went out there cleaning older enough to get them to quit going, but. I guess the main issue that I'm gonna bring up or handle in the future, whatever is one, these things are in horrible shape. You can see these things. It's had some, you know, blader, you know, it's had some greater edge welded to it, which isn't a good thing because a lot of cattle could probably step on that. It should really be like around the pipe. Second of all, it's pretty beat up. And this is just one of, I mean, this is the worst one of the two, but. We probably need to do something as far as sort of we responsible for them. Well, this is part of this whole, you know, there's deals done. I didn't do any research. There might be easements secured for this since it's on a half section line or something. There might be some paperwork. I didn't look into that part. But I just know from current landowners, some of the employees that have been here for a while, I mean, everybody agreed that was always part of the agreement, so. I just went out there and took care of it just to keep cattle off the road and whatever. And so, but that being said, we probably need to. Do a couple of things. One, I think if we are going to continue to take care of these, we need to just get something down on paper. If there isn't something already, we need to do some more research. But two, if we are responsible for them, they're in bad shape. I mean, they're, like you said, they've been welded, I mean, both of them said nineteen sixty-four on them, so. We either need to rebuild them off the material we got or build new ones. I did ask Luke Mossit, just curious what he even thought for a price. He basically said cheap end, four thousand, expensive end, seven thousand for each. So if you're gonna replace two of them, you're looking at anything from ten to fifteen thousand dollars probably. All right, so the other question with that too is, do we still want to do cattle guards? You could almost. Take that money and cuss your fence almost and just wash your hands of it maybe. I don't know. There's a, there's a few different things. Just a guy needs to think about going forward. It's probably fine for the rest of this year. You know, because I got them cleaned out, but. We really need to look at either repairing them, replacing them. They're in bad shape. Like, yeah, like, like almost to the point where after a while, I mean, guys call, hey, out of there and everything. It's gonna break or something. We're gonna be out there in emergency mode trying to repair it or replace it anyway, so we really need to. You know, just something to, you know, start thinking about. And, you know, we can continue this with Skylar too, but just wanted to bring it up since we had time that. This is another one of those old liabilities that, you know. Needs to get addressed one way or the other. It was another educational, I didn't know a thing about this. I was learning like the rest of us where I didn't even, I'd been on that road maybe once in my life, so I didn't ever call it. There's two other cattle guards, but I don't know anything about if those are privately, yeah, I think um. Rockets um.
Chump off.
Yep, and then um. Ron Deeds' places out there, whatever too. And then, so there's, there's actually four cattle guards on that road. I have no idea if the county's responsible for all four. I've only been two, because it was maybe only one I had or the other one's added later. I. It probably takes some more research to see if there's, I think, I would assume there's gotta be some kind of easement agreement, but.
So always that one that time down with David, right?
Well, see, that one, if I remember right, in that agreement, it said something about them having to maintain that cattle guard though. See, every one of these, because there's one up by Braddock too, and that deal. See, if you read the century code, it says that the county can grant cattle guards, but they're not responsible to maintain them. The person requesting them is. But this deal almost seems like there would have been a road unless the county agreed to take care of it, because the way I was explaining to it, so.
It's all almost good, yeah.
It is, it's really, they almost seem like they're all negotiating differently depending on who's the commissioner, which is, which is a bad deal, but that's.
Yeah, well, some of the shit would never agree.
I haven't had any out of the four or five people I talked to about that. Nobody corrected me that it was anything different, so I just went with it and thought, well, let's take care of it for now, keep cattle off the road. Anyway. Okay, well done. It's here. We'll take you right away, Don. Yep.
I just got a couple of requests. On the gravel road leading into the JT Ranch. About a half a mile off of eighteen oh four, we'd like to put in a cattle pass. I don't know if we need permission to do that or not.
We were just talking about cattle guard on a different property, but yeah, the, so the information that I found. On state century code says that you can, you can apply for a per, well, basically permitted use. The county can grant it, but whoever applies for it is responsible for maintaining it.
I understand.
Okay, because that's, I, I don't think there would be an issue with having a cattle guard just as long as.
Are you talking cattle guard or cattle pass?
Well, it's constructed, we've constructed with a well pipe and IDs, and it's putting level of the road so the cattle won't cross out. And then the other thing. We went to mow the ditches alongside the road leading up to the firestead. It's almost impossible. There are places where gravel. There's a road gravel on the east side of the road, and there's a road gravel on the west side of the road, and it's a doggone high. That a bushwhacker mower will blow your blades immediately. It's impossible to cut with a sickle mower. And what I request is the next time they blade that road. They take that gravel, push it to the middle of the road both ways, and then appreciate them making a third pass over the middle to kind of spread it and level it out. Because the next year, I'm gonna make sure that the, the, the edges of the road up to where the ditch goes down is sprayed for weed so we don't have that problem. But that, that road never used to be slicked out. And when we had this last raid, it was like, God, you're gonna goose, you know what? And that's because the gravel is on the edges of the road and not on the road where it's supposed to be. Clear and simple.
Yeah, I think that's.
I don't know, I don't know who maintains it out there, but I don't know, years ago, my grandfather served as a county commissioner. He insisted when they played a county road, that they go off the right-hand side, lay it early to the middle. Go down the other way, lay it early to the middle, and then make a third pass over the middle to spread the gravel and keep it on top of the road. Okay, thank you, Don.
Okay, okay, thanks, Don. Uh, Don, I guess before we leave, you'll, you'll probably have to. I'm not sure, we'll have to get that application kind of in writing.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure. I don't think we have a cattle pass permit, so we probably have to do.
The other thing, I heard rumors circulating about gossip up here in the courthouse. Where people were feeling sorry for my poor uncle Herbie. Allegedly, we were really bad people and kicked him off of the ranch. No. We entered into a purchase agreement with him back in December of two thousand twenty-one, and he was able to live in that, in the, in the house owned by the JT Ranch. Rent-free, without paying power, uh, or insurance or anything else, any other expenses for eight months. He's now vacated the premise, and he has moved to Bismarck, which he told us he was gonna do three years ago. Okay, so I just want that known.
Sure. Hey, Don, did you want to just turn in something and write in to Marvellous on that cattle, and then, okay, we'll let Skylar look into it.
Yeah, I'd love to do that, and how we intend to construct it.
Right, just, just a basic layout of it, and then when were you hoping to do it?
Well, it's not a lot of different factors, but either before it freezes up or the first thing next year.
Okay, well, I think if you get something in, we'll probably discuss it at the next meeting and go over it with our roads superintendent.
All right, sounds good.
Thanks, Don. So did you know, like, was Francis gonna call in if you wanted to participate, or?
You mean like that?
Oh, there she is. Okay, good. Well, we can move on then. Okay, um. There'll be a discussion on the Francis and Steve Worlinger fence. Just to start it off, so. We had information from Francis that he was concerned that the fence wasn't properly constructed, so. I contacted Michael Rabinus with old engineering and had him send a survey crew out. When they did Kelvin Kelch's review, when they ran out and checked his fence, and they stayed for the section line, and then they surveyed the fence, and I believe Josh has a map of the survey too. Old sent us a map of the survey. And according to this here, so the, it looks like the crosshatches in the line is the fence, and the solid line is the section line, so. So I guess from the looks of it, it looks like the fence wasn't really constructed according to the variance. And not only that, it actually crosses the section line at one point. So, now the matter is, is how to resolve it, so. I guess Steve or Francis, if you guys wanna come up first and tell me whether you give any explanation or how you wanna go about it?
Well, I had, um. There was a survey marker on the road. I forget what avenue that is on the west side. We measured thirty-three feet back. That's where we put our corner post and we started going east. And. We had nothing really to go off of. Once you left the survey mark from the road, but. At the last county commissioner meeting, you guys told me I can go to that hill or the creek. And then from that hill. I mean, we kind of agreed on. Even with Leo Meyer's fence that comes in from the east side, which is approximately ten or twelve feet off the section line. And. That's what I did there. If you bring the picture back up of the survey there, yep. That, there is a spot. It's on Terry Beetler's land. Discussed it with him. From, my fencer would not go up that hill. But I mean, it was, I took him up with the four-wheeler, and I've driven that many, many times with the four-wheeler over the years, but that hill was sliding down. The RA pole is actually sliding down. And it was really sketchy with the four-wheeler, and I'm not taking my. And so we, I talked to Terry Beetler. And he, he just said, well, if I, if he ever sells the land and there's a discrepancy, I would have to move it. I was like, yep, I'll agree to that. So we went up to that railroad tie and went right back down. Down the hill. And we stayed approximately ten, twelve feet. From there, we went up to the east end of our property. And when I left the commissioner meeting on July fifth. I had asked if I had to go ahead to put up the fence, and you guys agreed. And it was supposed to be a done deal.
Well, they were gonna write, Joe was gonna write something up before he started with that fence.
I guess that was not discussed on the fifth. Because when I left, when I walked out of the room that day, I said, I'm good to go. And you guys said, yep. Because my fencer was waiting. I had put him on hold for a month. Because there was a discrepancy, so. And then. In that, two weeks, two weeks after the fence is done, then that surveyor came out and he drew out the line where the section line was. And. I kind of went off on the far east side. There's a RA pole almost directly within line of the survey mark, and I measured that RA pole, which is twenty-seven feet. So. I just said, well, as long as I stay all of six feet on the south side, six feet or farther on the south side of the RA poles. I should be within my boundary. I mean, so, like I said, I had not much to go off of once I left the road. And Leonard come out, he looked at it. You can tell him, you can tell them what you thought.
I did. I drove over and I looked at it after it was fenced and. I hit drive back and forth a few times and looked at it, and then by the time I got there, Michael Rabinus had been there already, and he had his stakes in the center line. You know, and on his point with Terry Beetler, it just so happened that Terry called me out of the blue, like, said, you got a phone call from Terry, you're supposed to call him. So I called him and he had said, I just want you to know, he said, that. In regards to this fence, that that post is on the corner of my property. He said, but I'm good with it unless down the road, the land changes ownership. But he said, I already discussed that with Steve. We kind of agreed and said, well, you're good with it. That's all that matters. I mean, I don't, I don't want him going on there if he didn't, if he didn't want him on there. And, um. I mean, I looked at it and. I go back to where we started this thing. And it was. You know, whatever, ten, twelve, fifteen feet, whatever, was beyond the center of the section line. And now the fence is south of the RA poles. I mean, that, that fence is in an area where it isn't affecting anyone anymore, I believe, because the RA poles are there also. You know, so in my opinion, I, I'm fine with the way the fence is set. I think it's good. I mean, we have another party to the east. That's probably beyond the legal limits too, but. I think if they, they stayed in line with that, I think. If one's wrong, they're all wrong. If one's right, they're all right, so. And we're in an area that, to me, is just not a heavily traveled section line. I would have to assume that on hunting season. Or maybe a few that go through there, might be a few that took the wrong turn and wish they hadn't driven in that.
That's, that's where that railroad tie is, it's not drivable. But I asked Leonard, I said, you want me to take you down there? And he said, no.
No, well, it doesn't really matter. I mean, uh. It's on the right of way. I mean, if we leave this on the right of way, then what about the next guy? What about me? I got, I got that, where they put those rocks up on my place, that's, I wanna set a fence up there, and I set it up on the road now. So how is it fair to the next guy? I mean, if you have to move it, you have to move it now, so why didn't you just put it where it was supposed to be right of way?
I had, I had.
Well, you talk about the creek. I know Terry Beetler called me too, and he said, well, he didn't want that fence, he doesn't want that fence on his property. So if I ever sell that land down the road, that fence is on my property, he said, I don't, I don't want it on that. And he said, too, he said, the creek, and a few other people back there too, the creek. Okay, they, they just set a light fence up across the creek.
Well, there's, there's, there's a lot.
I haven't, I haven't done it. No, I don't have a creek. But I mean, people do it. They, all, everybody else along the creek has to do it.
If you looked on, I think it's eighty-ninth street. That goes east and west, about a mile north-west of that. That landowner has the fence coming right up to the road to avoid the creek.
Well, that, that could be possible. I'm not saying that that's not that way, but.
So, I mean, it's not in nobody's way, but, I mean.
Point is, you had to move the fence now. You were, you had to move the fence because there was an issue, right? So why didn't you just put it where it's supposed to be right of way?
I tried. I, I, like I said, I did my best. It would have been. I think on one end, I'm probably three feet off on one, on one end for a short period. But. Like Leonard said, it's not hurting nobody. And I never took a tape measure. You said eleven hundred and fifty feet from the road in. So I have not measured out eleven hundred and fifty. We just, we went, we're that hill down, we put our corner post, and we shot straight out. To where I put the mark, thirty-three feet on the edge of the road, and we went shot, you know? And it is, it is slightly at a little bit of an angle.
Yeah, you can tell the whole fence is way to angle.
Yeah. But, I mean, it's not, it's not, not hurt doing anybody any harm.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean it, maybe not hurting anybody, but the law says it's supposed to be thirty-three feet.
Well, Donnie, I mean, I could start going around.
Yeah, you could go around and check if somebody else has a discrepancy on another fence, like if Leo Meyer, if somebody has a discrepancy there, then we have to probably correct that one too. You know, I mean, if we just let everybody get by with thirty feet here, twenty feet there, what are we gonna gain? I want, I want it to now.
You know, it, it's.
I think what we'll do here is we'll, we'll give Francis a chance because he's the landowner on the other side. We'll give, let him speak his side to it here and let's try and come to a resolution. So Francis, if you want to come up and speak.
Thank you for the time today, commissioners. We're looking at two century codes here. We're looking at century code twenty-four dash oh seven dash oh three, twenty-four dash oh six dash twenty-eight. Number one, twenty-four dash oh six twenty-eight states, unless written permission is first secured from the board of county commissioners or board township supervisors. A fence may not be established on a right-ofway. That's violation number one. Um, twenty-four dash oh seven oh three, the board of county commissioners, if petitioned by a person having an interest in the adjoining land or a portion thereof. After a public hearing and the finding by the commissioners of public benefit, the key word is public benefit. There's four landowners who are adjoining that right-ofway, myself, Worlingers, Beetlers, and Leo Myers. If one of us, or all four of us, want to encroach on that right-ofway, we have to have a public meeting with the commissioners. And if anybody in the public wants to contest it, you always have to go with a public benefit. Because in eighteen sixty-six, the federal government did the grid system for section lines. It's been modified slightly throughout the years. But the one resolution is this, a section line is four rods wide. Each landowner past or provide thirty-three feet. You can't just make one landowner do that. And that being the case, the only way that you can fence on a right-ofway is number one, there's no public contest to it. And number two, the encroachment is so severe, say you have a cliff or something like that, you can do that. Other than that, you as county commissioners are actually violating the law by doing what you did, Commissioner Weller. You can't go out there and say it's not hurting somebody. The law is the law. Federal, state laws are all the same. North Dakota considers section lines as public road open to public travel and are defined as sixty-six feet wide. That means, even if that small hill there that they fenced around, you can't do that because somebody, whether walking or on a horse or an ATV, can drive that hill. Now, if that was a straight bluff off and the power poles had come around it, you have the authority to do that, but right now you don't. There is, um, Wayne Stenham wrote eleven piece opinion on right-aways. And it is very key, the last three pages, that the public opinion always has priority over adjacent landlords. And that commissioners always have to do that through a public hearing. On the end here, he writes, this opinion is issued pursuant to North Dakota Century Code fifty-four dash twelve dash oh one. It governs the actions of public officials, meaning you county commissioners, until such a time. As the question presented is decided by the courts. This has already been decided by every court in the nation over the last hundred years. There's nothing to decide here. You as county commissioners cannot play god. A century code is a century code. And you don't get to rewrite them. You don't get to use your public opinion, your personal opinion to do this here. You couldn't grant me this waiver. You can't grant it to Worlingers unless you have that public hearing. So, Joe, I'm sure can provide you with these century codes, and it is my intention that if you go forward and allow this fence on here, that I will file suit and I'll fight this in court. Because that is the law.
Thanks, Francis. Rebuttal to that, Joe? Just a second, folks.
Well, I don't really know whether rebuttal to that. I certainly think you have more discretion than what is being summarized there, but. I, I don't know, whatever actually you guys want to say, I guess. As long as it's reasonable, I think.
Steve wants to speak.
Okay. Go ahead, Steve. You wanna come to the podium if you're interested, just, just for the audio, so.
I guess I have to ask, um. On eighty-ninth street, that'd be on Francis' property, was there a variance allowed for your fence to come up to the road?
There is. When it comes to bridges going underneath, where you have a county bridge or a county culprit that goes under a gravel road. You have the right to come up and fence to that. But you have to realize, you were directed by the commissioners to follow eleven hundred feet off of right-ofway. You do not have one pole, according to Michael Rabinus' survey, that is off right-ofway, including your corner poles. Everything goes at an angle. If the commissioners would have run into a cliff like where you went out, they could have granted you a variance. But you can't be granted a variance for another fifteen hundred feet because the public has the right. You, you cut on fifteen hundred feet of right-ofway, that if the public does drive down, they're gonna be driving on line. The public thinks they have sixty-six feet, so they're gonna take another thirty-three feet of mine. That's why what you're doing is so dangerous. Where you say one guy can fence a right-ofway, and the other guy has to provide sixty-six feet, that hunter doesn't know that. And neither does anybody else driving it.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I'm sure that surveyor went off the same survey mark that you had put in the road. It's, I think, still there. It was two months ago. I took my hundred-foot tape measure. I measured thirty-three feet from that rebar in the road, and I went another foot farther. And I was standing on the road. The fencer was in front of me down in the ditch. And there was an old wood poster. I said, go on that side of the post. So we're sure. So. Where he come up? Where I don't have one pole on the outside of the right-ofway? I don't know. But I went off, I want, I went off of your surveyor marker, the rebar with the little pink castle on the road. You know where that's at?
Okay.
So how's your planes installed that survey pin? As for your point, a half a mile over where you weren't sure to go, that survey pin is also exposed.
I found a hole.
Right. So that being the case, the commissioners were more concerned, the purpose for having old engineering come down, what if mountain planes would have been wrong? So old engineering came down, and they confirmed that mountain plane survey was an accurate survey. So what they did, they put the flags down so our commissioners knew. So if you take a tape measure from your northwest corner post and you measure to what old engineering did, your foot and a half on to. Not one pole on that half a mile is off right-ofway. And that is nobody's fault but your own. I mean, nobody else is gonna take responsibility, but regardless of this here, it's not what you want, it's not what I want. What does the law tell you? And these century codes, they're there. You can't change them, like Wayne Stenham said, unless it goes to court. You're on the wrong side of this issue. You're, you might have a hundred farmers coming in here the next year saying, I wanna do that exact same thing. Are you gonna tell them it's all right, Commissioner Weller? Are you gonna tell them it's all right, Commissioner White? Because it looks good.
Well, I'm gonna tell you this, that as a board of commissioners, we have in our option discretion. Uh, we can use discretion. And that means that, I would assume that every case is looked at individually under that discretionary rule, so.
Yeah, but what are you gonna do then?
Uh, well, I'm just saying, everyone is gonna be different, you're gonna use discretion. I mean, you know, Francis has a good point with, with the century codes and that, but, you know, we're not a court of law here, we're county commissioners.
I know, but we gotta obey the law.
Here's Wayne Stenjum's opinion, very clear. These opinions that he wrote, and all you gotta do is read these last three pages, are consistent with state law principles. And that when public interest, that doesn't mean us adjoining landlords. It means the public interest is at stake, an interpretation that favors the public is preferred. That means, a right-ofway is sixty-six feet wide. And unless Mr. Rolliner or myself have to go around the hill, you cannot grant eleven hundred feet coming on right-ofway or fifteen hundred feet because you're opening up Pandora's box to do all this. You're one of the largest counties in North Dakota, we've got more real section lines than we are even aware of. They go very explicitly into this. The county is not required to maintain section lines or improve them. And if so much as the walking width of a right-ofway is available for the public, you can't close that right-ofway now. Because in eighteen sixty-six, when the federal government did this here, it really, there was no machinery, there was no vehicles. There was horses, there's people walking. So, it's, you know, you could push the limit where you allowed them to jog out a little bit around that creek. You might be able to push that limit in court. But you're not gonna be able to push the rest of it. And as for somebody else's fence, I agree with you, there's fences on the right-ofway all over. It's not their job to call them out. They made me, Commissioner White, and Commissioner Erle came out, when you put that fence up and said, "We can't make that determination until you get a survey." If you and your dad wanna call out somebody's fence, you could go out, pay for a twenty-five-hundred-dollar survey on every person you wanna call out. And after you get that, then you can spend the next three and a half years arguing to the commissioners like I have about the laws. But, the taxpayers of Evans County are not gonna be held to do that. That's your job if you wanna call somebody out.
So, you're saying every time I put somebody's fence is on the right-ofway, you gotta pay twenty-five, the public has to pay twenty-five, hire a surveyor, whatever it costs?
You would have to if you're contesting. The commissioners aren't gonna do that because if nobody's complaining about it, it's fine. I had a problem with your fence being on right-ofway, they made me pay for the survey, which is fine. The taxpayers of Evans County don't have to pay for all these surveys, the person complaining does. So, if you have a problem with them, get them surveyed, bring them to the commissioners and they'll deal with it.
Okay, well, I think.
But another thing I was gonna say right away is when I left on July fifth, I even specifically asked, "Do I need to wait for something written up?" Because I kinda wanted something, "No, it's gonna get written up, you're, you're good to go." So, that's when I went ahead.
Yeah, well, I mean, just to rebut that.
So, I didn't just go out.
That whole, Steve, the whole point of this survey, bringing this map up is to prove the fact that you didn't even build the fence according to the variance. So, that's where the crux of the issues come here. I mean, not only did you not follow the right-ofway and, you know, and the thing about it is, is tape measure or not, doing the best you can, whatever, you're, you're still in the right-ofway when they ask you to be off the right-ofway.
Who do I get to measure? I measured from a survey mark.
Yeah, in one spot, but then the difficulty of building a fence a quarter or a half mile long is maintaining that line for a quarter to a half mile. So, you need to have some kind of survey GPS something on your own too to make sure it's right. Or you err on the outside of caution and you go way outside a bit more than just a foot. But it, the point of this discussion and what's really happening is whether the variance was a good idea or not, I mean, you're actually encroaching across on someone else's property, you're not only in the right-ofway, you're actually on someone else's property. And that is your job to define where that is. I mean, it's not our job to tell you exactly where it's supposed to go. We gave you permission inside of this area and then you didn't even follow that anyway. That's the problem, Steve.
Well, I'm gonna say I did the best of my ability.
Well, nobody's arguing that.
So, I mean, like I said, I had to go ahead on July fifth from you guys. And now, now you're kinda backpedaling.
No, we're not backpedaling actually. What's happening is it's kinda the same thing of like when you get a deer grabbes to hunt on your property and then you're hunting on everybody else's neighbor's property because you have this deer grabbes, that doesn't, just because you've got a variance, that doesn't mean you get to build the fence wherever you want. It means you have to build it to where we agreed you were gonna put it. And this survey proves, you didn't build it where we said you were gonna build it. I know you did the best you could, I'm not accusing you of any kind of wrongdoing, but the fact of the matter is the fence is in the wrong spot. It's not where we agreed to put it. And now the problem is, is you have a situation where you have a, a joining landowner who wants that right-ofway maintained and has a pretty darn good argument to keep it maintained. And I'm not afraid of it when I was wrong and I think this variance probably was wrong because now not only do we have a fence in the wrong spot anyway, we didn't accomplish anything that we wanted to do with the variance, which was to try and get two landowners to agree on fence. But now we have a fence that looks like it's gotta get moved anyway. And I, in my opinion, I don't really care if the adjoining landowner thinks it's fine, you have a bigger fence on his land. The whole point of this process is to stop these arguments and get these fences in the right place. And now it's in the wrong place and it's still encroaching on someone else's property. And who's to say twenty-five years from now that that land changes hands? That this handshake agreement is no good anymore like we always run into with these handshake agreements? I, I have a problem with it now.
I mean, I'm not saying, I mean, uh, yeah, I was, I'm a little wrong, a few feet off, but whatever. If somebody's gonna be childish like that, that's fine, but, um, I have to ask, why are you picking on me? What, what, what do you have against me, Francis? Or my dad? We have never done nothing to you. I mean.
Well, hold on, no, Steve, hold on, no, we're not going down this road here, let's stick to the, no, but let's stick to the facts, Steve.
Yes, there's another fence that I'm kind of in the middle, my property's in the middle of two other fences that are both off. And I don't care, I don't got a problem with it. But why is it me?
I don't think you can.
I kind of, yeah. Like you said, it's fair to everybody. Well, why is it me? So, it's not fair to me that I gotta move my fence, but nobody else does.
Well, apparently the other neighbors don't seem to have a problem with it and that's what we've always agreed to. We're not gonna go out looking for fights, but when a fight comes where you have adjoining neighbors that don't agree on the fence, there's a certain amount of latitude the county commissioners have. And then even after that point, if you can't come to an agreement, it's gotta end up in the courts. We're not a court of law, but we have a responsibility to maintain the right-ofway and allow for variances when the right-ofway can't be maintained. That's our purview, that's where our rules and law is land. And honestly, I didn't have any experience with variances. I thought it was a good idea to try and make this situation in the middle of the road.
And remember when you came out that day?
Yeah.
And you actually stood there on the edge of that hill, right above that little spring. And you're like, "I don't see a one reason why we would have to put the fence way in there." If you'd come out here a foot from the section line, well, I stayed ten or twelve feet off the section line. I didn't put it a foot from the section line. I stayed, I went farther than what you said.
So, the purpose, commissioners, it's real simple. It's Wayne Stenjum. This opinion was based off of somebody else that had an argument over a right-ofway. The work has already been done. Uh, this was done two thousand nine, it's, it's two thousand nine dash L dash oh one is the opinion piece. You're trying to make this personal, Steve, it's not. Your fence is on a state right-ofway, a federal right-ofway. And it can't be, and if you have a problem with anybody else's, you have to do like I did and come to the commissioners and make every move. They have to, that's why they have a state's attorney. Joe is going to get a copy of this opinion piece plus these century codes. They have the base off of that. That's why century codes are here, they're already thought out for us. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, we just have to obey the law, is all we have to do. Yes, commissioners do have the ability to grant a variance, it tells you that in here. But you can't get outside the guidelines. Because if that's the case, if you had four commissioners on the same right-ofway and they wanted to close that right-ofway down, they'd have the power to do it if they didn't hold a public hearing. So, number one, commissioners don't have the power to close a section line. Number two, they have to have the public, um, hearing to do that. And the public has to request that, it has to be for the benefit. So, don't make it personal, this is just the law.
Well, I guess I'll just, I'll just go ahead and reiterate one thing and that's, I don't disagree with wanting you guys to move your fence in. Like, I get, I understand where you're coming from, okay? But my one opinion doesn't overrule the century code and even public hearings. I agree with Francis on that. And even as a commission together, we are bound to the century code. And I will admit it, and I would be willing to bet, my federal commissioners would too, they probably weren't familiar with that specific century code even when we go forward with the variance. Now, is it so black and white as Francis is bringing it up? Probably not. I mean, they're out, I mean, like I said, that's why the courts are at your disposal on this kind of stuff. As far as the right-ofway goes and our ability to grant the variance, I mean, I'll just go ahead and say it, it's probably not a good idea. I was trying to bridge the gap between two landowners and that apparently didn't solve that anyway. And the fact that, I will just tell you a story quick. I had someone call me that was like, "Hey, come on, look at this fence. It's like ten feet off of this approach." I'm like, "Okay, well, it was in the area I was going to anyway, so I drove by it." And I called the landowner and I said, "You know, your fence looks really close to this approach that's, you know, the section line." And he said, "Well, that approach isn't on the section line. That's a private approach and that fence is actually like thirty-four feet off the section line." Well, you'd go out there without any information or anything like that, you would, you would go, "Yeah, this fence is way too close" and you could start causing an issue. But even checking with Josh, that landowner did, he had a map and he showed it. And I mean, obviously Josh's GIS isn't actual survey, but it's darn close. And it showed that fence being like thirty-five feet off the section line. So, already in that case, you could have someone go out and go, "This fence is way too close" and you could start a whole hubbub without doing any information and realizing that you could be making a mistake. I mean, encroachments are difficult to handle and that's why there is law like this because it's been battled over and over. So, I'll admit right now, I wasn't that familiar with variances. I did talk to Joe a little bit, but it's not something that's been done a lot, so nobody's pro about it. And looking at it now, we probably did move too fast because now we didn't solve the situation that we were trying to solve anyway, so. And I know there's other people out there fencing on, they're fencing thirty-three feet off through crests too though. Not everybody's encroaching, there are guys that are following the rules too, so. It's probably gonna create a bad precedent if you're gonna continue with it, so.
Well, that's, that's why I said we gotta go by the law. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with you guys. I'm sorry, I, I, this, I don't, and I don't know what's the rift between families, it's not my business.
There is no rift.
I, but, but I, I'm just gonna say that we have discretionary power to give these leeways and we do it when we feel fit. We did it in the past, we did it a couple of months ago. And I'm just, I just think that the effort was made, he did a good job of moving the fence, we gained a lot of ground. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna make a motion that we grant the variance to Steve and Frank Rolliner.
I disagree with you.
Commissioner, have you, have you read the century codes?
I have read some of them, I haven't read all those you have, but.
So, should you be making that opinion before you read the century code? Before you even listen to your state's attorney, at least let your state's attorney read the century code.
I know we have that discretion at our, at our power to, to make these choices depending on the situations at hand. And I just, and I don't know what, what it is, and you say there's no rift, but something is, is.
So, if that's the case, Commissioner.
Hold on here, hold on. We got a motion on the floor here, so.
Joe, I guess I would like to know.
No, wait, 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 we have a motion on the floor. We need to call for a second and get a second to get into discussion or it needs to die for a lot of seconds. We're not gonna discuss it between motions. So, the motion is on the floor by Commissioner White to approve the variance as written. And then, is there anything with the fence?
Wait, what do you mean as written?
Well, I'm curious, I want to clarify the motion.
The one that we talked about in the July meeting.
Right, and then do you have anything you had with the fence or are you just talking about approving the variance?
The variance was for the fence, was it not?
Not the fence as constructed, because there was no variance for the first, uh, over thousand.
Then the motion is to approve a variance for the fence as is constructed.
That's what I'm wondering, we're leaving the fence or if we're ordering the, okay, so you wanted to actually grant the variance to allow the fence as constructed?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to allow that. Anybody wanna repeat the motion? Not, is there a second to that motion?
Can we have discussion?
Not unless we get a second.
I thought we always had.
Well, I'll call, I'll call for a second three times, if that does not work, then the motion.
Okay, I'll second it just because I wanna get discussion going.
Fair enough, so Commissioner White, second the motion. Now we're in discussion.
Okay, the problem I got is that we approved it in July where he was supposed to put the fence. And it, there sure have been more homework or something done at that time. Because now we're coming, and I'm kinda disagreeing with Francis, you know, yeah, the law is the law. But at the same token, we approved him to put it where he put it.
But we didn't, we didn't really approve it because we never voted on it and I said, I said right-ofway.
I think there was a vote on, but the approval was, was, it was not where the fence, that's my problem with the whole thing is that the approval was, was he had to stay on the right-ofway. The only time he could get into the right-ofway was for to deal with this specific piece of terrain. And then, you know, then Micronius has subsequently surveyed it and didn't comply with what was approved. And that's why it makes it kinda difficult because now we gotta approve a different variance for where the fence actually is if you don't approve it. You know, whereas I think if the fence was thirty-two feet off the section line the whole way and only came on that one piece of terrain and did go to his neighbor's property, he probably wouldn't be here right now.
So, we actually never did approve where it's supposed to go then?
We didn't, we didn't, we certainly, you guys didn't approve for this where the fence is here. Because you specifically said you had to stay off the right-ofway until you get to that piece of terrain. And then you also specifically said you cannot go into the other property owner's property. Um, and then it was gonna come back and tie in the deal with fence.
So, in your opinion, were you, I mean, what's your opinion about it?
I, you know, I, normally I don't like taking such a strong stance when the fence is only a foot or two off the right-ofway because we could be wrong potentially. In this case, I guess we had it surveyed by our own independent engineering person. I'm a little bit more comfortable with the fact that we're probably not wrong on the location of the fence. I think if we were gonna pass another variance, uh, to Francis's point, we should probably wait for a public hearing. Just, just to comply with that, that, uh, twenty-four oh seven oh three that was referenced. But, you know, I don't know how you could approve a fence if part of the fence is not even on this land. Forget that right-ofway, it's the other's land. And, um, you know, when it gets to this point, I really just don't like the fact that it didn't comply with what you guys approved. You know, make sure to get it off to thirty-three feet.
We didn't even fully approve that first law because you were gonna write up that variance.
Right, well, no, there was, there was a motion to second, you guys voted on it. I did draft, I did.
We did vote on it.
It was, well, I drafted the variance.
Well, we didn't vote on it. We're not gonna check, I'm quite certain. Because I, I remember asking this a lot, you know, I never, you had to say whenever you got to vote on it. And you said, "Well, he's gonna vote, you're gonna write it up and then we're gonna vote on it."
Well, I had in mind, because it was voted on, it passed and they drafted it. And then, uh, when I was gonna present it at the following meeting, uh, that's when we found out that the location of the fence was not compliant with what was discussed. And so, didn't really get sensitive to sign it at that point. So, we're obviously gonna have to discuss it some more because it wasn't where it's supposed to be. With that being said, I guess if we're going to act on, you know, to not approve the current location of the fence, if there's other instructions, like if it's on the ferry or a list item, I mean, the poles are empty or not. I don't know how you could pick for one obstruction and not the other, the section line. Nobody might be.
So, was there, uh, was there a public hearing that I wasn't? So was there a, was there a public hearing that I wasn't aware of? Did I miss? Because before you could close or grant part of a section line to be closed, you have to have a public hearing. I, I don't miss nothing.
No, no.
I didn't have a public hearing on that. Okay, so, right there, it's violating the law. You have to have that public hearing.
That's why I would like to see a public hearing. That'd be my opinion.
Well, that's what I said last time, when you guys were gonna do that. So why don't you just put it on your property, go straight all the way on your property, and then you're good. Never have to move that again. I mean, I have nothing against.
The reason why it's where it's at is, I run four hundred head of cattle. And I do not let cows out. About a month ago, I believe there was about forty head of cattle in his yard, and they got out by a creek crossing, where electric fence went across a creek. I fence plenty of cricks. I hate to do it, because, you know, in the summer, when it's a hundred degrees, they pile up in the water. Like, your fence don't stand a chance.
Well, I'm not, not disagreeing there.
I wa, I like to keep good neighbors by keeping my cows in, because when cows get on cultivated land on somebody else's property, especially if they don't have cattle, and does damage, that costs a lot of friction and a lot of money. So that was, my point is to put up the best possible fence I can put up, so my cattle do not get out.
But you know what I told you, that they want you to just stay, keep it on your land. Okay, if you would've got a variance going around that creek, come back down, stay on your land again, why?
Because it's just the way that the terrain is, it's straight up, straight down.
It's not the problem. I mean, if you would've went back over on your land rather than meeting up with Leo Myers, there, you didn't really gain that much, I mean.
I mean, it's.
The problem, the, the argument is gonna be this, where Josh had said, wrong, there is just a short section right where he's got that hand that you could possibly argue a variance, and even there, you probably can't. But you've got almost fifteen to sixteen hundred feet now, by moving their fence out thirty-three feet, you took the best part of the right of way. There is no excuse for coming out on the right of way that east fifteen hundred feet or the west eleven hundred.
Well, that's what, that's why, that's why, that's why I was saying that, you know? You could always cut the hay on, on that other side of that fence anyway.
I'm like, like, uh, Joe said earlier, I'm probably a foot to three feet off. And it was by accident. I mean, I started out, like, I don't know how, they said that I'm not even right out on the far west end. I don't know how that's possible, 'cause we stood there with the tape, when I had thirty-three feet, and then granted, the fence was down thirty-three feet from me. And I said, well, go on that, go farther on that side, so we're, we're sure of ourselves. And that's somebody standing by the survey marker.
So at about nine hundred feet, you're already in sixteen feet onto the right of way. So where you started on the west side, you're just barely on the right of way. By the time you get away over there, um, let's just say you're in fifteen.
Not according to that survey picture, I'm not. I'm right, I'm running right along the line.
Right.
If you look at the.
No. Well, that's because it's a point, I, the Xs.
Yeah, the Xs are my fence.
Right. But when you go out there with the tape measure, he's in fifteen to sixteen feet before it comes out sharp like that. It doesn't change the fact.
And how far are you from the west, where I'm sixteen feet?
You're about nine hundred feet. You were supposed to go to eleven hundred. And at about nine hundred, you're already making a call.
Well, you gotta understand, Francis, we were going by a picture. And it was not exact either. That, they were just saying that's about, they measured on, I don't know what you guys use. It was about eleven hundred feet, so we went up kinda, 'cause I can barely get through between the creek and where it curves up that hill. I can barely get through with a four wheeler.
The point I'm making.
So.
Wait, so, we're, we're gonna curb this back here a little bit. We, we've already discussed this at length. We're gonna just move forward here, so. The decision here, we have a motion and a second to allow for the fence to exist where it's at. I guess my contribution to the discussion is, you're gonna allow that fence to exist where it's at, where it doesn't follow the variance that we granted, which I don't even know would hold up in court, but I mean, honestly, nobody really knows that. If it got challenged, you don't know where it might. To now basically just allow a variance wherever it is, then from now on, why don't we just let people build the fence where they want to, and then grant them the variance, rather than come up with a variance before you let them build the fence? So the variance didn't solve anything. All it did was create more of an issue. I mean, it, that's the problem that we have to decide here too, is not only are we gonna allow variance, but are we gonna have a process for allowing the variance? 'Cause if we're just gonna grant variances to people 'cause we're afraid of arguing, or we don't really understand what's going on, then there's no precedent, there's no ruling, there's and any of that stuff, as soon as you go to any kind of court, it's probably just gonna overrule it and embarrass you on it. I mean, that's the point. I mean, even the variance we granted, I'll admit right now, it's starting to look like a mistake. And the reason why is 'cause it was grounded in any kind of policy. It wasn't grounded, it was just us making a decision. And I'm not completely against that to a point. We, we, I thought we reached a common sense decision on where it went. But one thing we didn't do is, we didn't at all include the participating landowners on the other side of the fence. We only went with one landowner's side, which was probably a mistake. And I think having a public hearing on every encroaching fence is gonna be a monotonous process, so the, the only common sense thing to do in this case is to honor the right of way, so you don't have to have public hearings all over the place. I mean, at some point, you have to get consistent, and that's the problem I'm having right now, even with this motion, is it lacks complete consistency. It's even more inconsistent than the variance we granted, which was inconsistent, but I felt came from a good place. And if there's one thing I can't stand here, since I've been here, is, is the inconsistency. We have problems with hand shaped deals and this all over the place. We're trying to sort it out case by case, and this does not solve it, it makes it worse. That's my opinion on it. I, I have no doubt that you did the best you could, Steve. Nobody's accusing me of anything other than the fact that it's just proof that the fence isn't where we want to agree on. Two, it's not only encroaching on the right of way in spots we agreed it wouldn't, but it's actually encroaching on someone else's land. Three, it creates precedent where now anybody can just build a fence, and they come in here, and then we just give them a variance where the fence lands. It doesn't make any sense. So I just, I, I'm not in favor of creating a variance for this existing fence, and, uh, actually in favor of probably not even honoring the original variance, and just making them go thirty-three feet. So we don't have to have a public hearing and create this process where we're having a public hearing every month on fence lines all over the county, so I just, I don't, I don't think this.
Eric, can you, can you verify, like, by going, by how you guys did that, like, from the road into that hill? It was kind of a guess on footage, right?
Right.
I mean, so, there's no saying that, well, 'cause eleven hundred feet might've put me right into creek. You know what I mean?
Right.
'Cause nobody went out there with a tape measure or a wheel and walked that off.
Right, I'll agree to that, but the one thing about it is, it seems like in this situation, it's like, we had an agreement, and you didn't err on the side of maybe going further out than the agreement. It's always inside the agreement. It's always a little more than the agreement said, rather than being outside of the agreement going, yeah, they're actually thirty-nine feet outside of the right of way for twelve hundred feet that they went in. I mean, that's the point too, is it's like, there's variance, and the fence, as soon as it could, went inside of that. And that's a problem with that too. And I'm not accusing you of that, for whatever reason, it happened that way. And that's the problem with the variance too, is it's not like, oh, we did this, and then it went above and beyond to even go outside.
But he's also arguing in your favor of me, you said after that hill, I should just, even with Myers' fence.
Mm-hmm.
And he's saying that's not right either.
Well, and I would actually agree with that. I, like I said, this variance, all we're doing by discussing it is proving that we didn't do enough research, and we granted something we really didn't understand. It's proof right there. And really, I mean, even Leo's.
Whose responsibility is that now?
Well, even Leo's fence, I mean, if it's, if it's being contested, it's all, we're gonna have to get checked.
Leo's fence's got nothing to do with it, but whose responsibility is that? Now I put a fence up.
Mm-hmm.
The fence is not where they told you to put it, though.
Okay, there's maybe a few feet that I could change on the, be, on the west side. I could change that. I, I could maybe make that. But to, to change the whole fence costs big money on somebody's responsibility that did not do the research. Now, now I gotta go and move it again, because the whole thing, because you guys didn't do the research, you know?
Well, I would actually say the responsibility to place the fence is still on you, in, on your hands. And if you would've followed the variance, you'd have a hard time even doing anything different, but you didn't even follow the variance. That's the problem. The point I have is, how is there any guarantee that when you move this fence? If you don't go and hire somebody with high accuracy measuring equipment to go and stake out the variance and build it to that, how am I gonna know that when you go and move this fence after this, meaning that it's right again? And how many times are we gonna have to have it re-surveyed and re-checked to make sure that this variance is obligated? The truth of the matter is, is I'll admit here right now, the variance was a mistake, 'cause it created more problems than it solved, even with us. We had to hire a surveyor.
Would you, would you?
Now, Steve, hold on.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, the problem with this situation is now we created a scenario where we have to verify that the variance was followed. And all along, there is state law that basically tells you, unless you have a dang good reason, you should just honor the right of way. And it's starting to make sense that that's the reason why, because we just created a bunch of work, a bunch of more meetings, and nobody's any more satisfied than when the variance was granted. You're still upset, Francis is still upset, and we don't have a situation that's rectified. So it tells me that the variance is a mistake.
So, are you agreeing that from the east side in, from the far east up to that hill, I followed the variance?
I would say you did on that part, probably. I mean, because, I mean, it looks like, uh, it's in line with what we had said before.
Okay, so if I would move, if I would correct it, from that hill to the west, which would be probably, you know, I don't know, five, six, seven hundred feet, I would be within line of the variance. You'd be okay with that?
I would say no. Well, I would say in, in the.
Because you, that's the okay you gave me.
Right, well, I would tell, I'll tell you this, though.
That was never signed.
Right, but here's the big issue, though. You gotta remember one issue with this variance. Is it gonna pass in court? Do you believe strongly enough in it to continue with it to have to get challenged in court? 'Cause it's already been announced that it's gonna be challenged in court, most likely.
It's not gonna. That's why I came here.
Right.
And you guys gave me the go-ahead.
Mm-hmm.
So if I honor that variance, one hundred percent, to the T.
The problem is this here, you didn't wait for written permission.
Right.
Number one, I wasn't included in it. You didn't have a public hearing. You got so many things you have to check without the public hearing.
Right.
It doesn't matter.
And that's the point.
The commissioners are not babysitters. This, this century code, not only do our commissioners need to know it, we as landowners need to know it, because we own the property under. There is no excuse for us to put a fence up on county right of way. It's not the commissioners' fault. It's our own responsibilities, and that's exactly where it lays.
But I, on July fifth, when I left, I did ask, do I need to wait? And they told me, you were not here. They told me, you got the go-ahead.
Yeah, 'cause we agreed on a variance, though, and you didn't follow the variance. That's the point.
Okay, if I go correct it, and I follow your variance.
Though, Steve, that's the point I'm trying to make. Are you gonna hire a surveyor, go out and measure exactly where that's gonna go, though?
Oh, I don't need to. Your survey marks are there.
Yeah, my survey marks are there, but can you follow the direct line and distance and bearing? This is the problem with measuring. I went to survey school. You can measure something at thirty-three feet, and you could go a hundred feet away, and you can be five feet off if you're just an inch or two off. That's why they include bearing and distance on there. This is the difficulty of the.
Now, I, I was, now I got the survey marks, two weeks after my fence was put up, the survey marks were put in.
Mm-hmm.
I could very easily put that fence thirty-four feet across the section line. And then it would be right on.
But then you should do it all the way along.
That's not what you guys agreed to on July fifth, Don.
Well, I didn't, I didn't agree to, because we never voted on it.
I believe it was.
No, it wasn't.
You have to also, you have to also, if the commissioners were not, didn't know the century codes at that time, it just changes.
But that's why we, I came here. I'm not a lawyer, I, or, or whatever you wanna call it. I can't, I'm a farmer, I, but I can't know all the rules, but that's why I came to the county commissioners. Where there's commissioners and the state's attorney.
But it's just like me coming here arguing.
Wait, well, hold on, we're, we're getting, we're getting off track again, but again, all I'm telling you is this. Right now, the motion and the second on the floor is to honor the fence as it is. That's where we're gonna be voting on it. And that's where we're probably gonna have to call the question here, because we're getting in the lead, so. So we're gonna do a roll call vote. Uh, just to refresh everybody, the motion is to grant the variance for the fence as it's built. It's motion by Commissioner Michael, and second by Commissioner Home. Matt Lauder, would you do the roll?
I'll work.
I'm gonna vote to approve the variance.
Is that a yes vote?
Yes.
Maygrove?
No.
Everly?
No.
Weidel?
Yes.
Follow.
Yes.
Okay. So, then the question would be, the variance will have to be redrafted. I don't even know how you draft it now.
So whether it's challenged in court?
Well, I guess it would be challenged in court. I mean, that would be the question, so. So yeah, so I don't know. I'm not sure, I think you would, well, we do have a survey of the fence, actually. So we would be able to get, like, bearing and distances off of the survey, and you could call off the the variance that way, you know what I mean? Almost like a meets and bounds description. You would have to get, we'd have to get a little old engineer, and have him provide, you know, like, the bearing and distance at certain points, and then you could just that's how you'd have to do it. I don't know, what else you would call up?
Well, I don't know what to say, 'cause you have a fence, it's on somebody else's land, but I guess I can just draft the variance for where the current fence is, um.
Well, that's what I'm saying, to call off where the current fence is, you'd have to get the information from the old engineer to be able, because otherwise, you wouldn't be able to state, like, where the fence actually is. Make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, that's kind of the resolution, so we're gonna move on. Thanks for coming in, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Dave Tardowski, you're up. You gotta come to the podium.
I have another job there, I thought, for you.
Well, I don't know. Yeah, I'm just checking to see.
Well, we, we'd like you to be at the podium just for the audio, and so.
Hello, Scotty. Just see how the roads come, and what you guys came up with.
Scotty, did you look at?
I believe that is ninety-third street, right, southwest?
Yep, I looked at it again. There's not much we can do to the north side due to the power poles, the fence, there's also a water line in there. South side is, we could do some work, probably. Is it gonna fix all our problems? No, it's not.
Well, to clarify and refresh everybody's memory, the reasoning is the snow blockage, right? I mean, that's, that's the big issue with your road, is the snow blockage?
Yeah, I mean, if there's four miles back to my place, I don't prob, take care of myself, but it's the first mile, I mean, that's the worst, I can't even get by that. First, most of the time, I just can't even get up.
So it's the second mile, right? 'Cause the first mile.
Yeah, the first one. Well, the first mile from Larry Amber's left.
Yeah, it's the first mile going west.
I mean, right by its house, there's a big hill there.
Well, 'cause the question is, though, is if you can't cut the back slope, right? 'Cause that's what you probably need to do with your.
Yeah, in order to eliminate some of the snow trap, you'd have to cut the back slope on the north side of the road, where all the utility pools, the fence line, there's water line.
Why can't they move the line?
I'm not saying they can't.
Yeah, I mean, I, I worked for a power company for thirty-one years, we moved the line all the time.
Okay, well, the question is, though, the question, are they, are they, are they even in the right of way, though? I mean, like, are, are we requesting utilities to get moved that are inside the right of way or outside the right of way?
I believe they're outside the right of way.
See, now that, in my mind, without knowing exactly how it works, you almost have to purchase more right of way, or some kind of a borrower, or something. I mean, 'cause if they're not inside the right of way, to ask them to move it, you're basically gonna pay them to move it out.
Right, you gotta pay.
I mean, if they were inside the right of way, you're demanding they move it out, that's one thing.
Right, but if they're outside the right of way, and you want to move, you gotta.
Basically, you almost have to purchase right of way from the adjacent landlord, which would be great, then deeper, Larry Amber.
Larry Amber.
Right, so you have to, I mean, you'd have to purchase right of way and then move those utilities, right?
The poles are right in the ditch, how could they be out of the right of way?
Well, that's.
I don't think the poles are right in the ditch, they're up on top of the hills.
Did you measure it?
No, I did not measure it, 'cause we don't really know a hundred percent where that center. No, I did not measure it, because we don't really know a hundred percent where that center of that right of way is. So that's the next step, is if we wanna pursue this any further, we gotta have a surveyor come in, survey it, then figure out where the thirty-three feet is, then we can advance further if that's.
Yeah, because I don't know, I don't have to start to measure, but some of the poles are pretty forceful to right of way, they're like force.
And just that first hill is a problem, and there isn't really, really bad, is maybe that pulls out. But I talked, I talked to Larry last night, and he said he doesn't have a problem with, he thinks it's a good thing if that gets cut back, and he said, he told me he'd sign off on. Doing that, and I own the land at the end, right at the T, and then we're building a house beyond that gate, um, where it turns south and goes to Davis. I mean, it's, there's also about three or four spots in there where it's a low spot, there's no culvert, and in the spring, the water just pools up and goes over the road and sits on the road. Where the road was never, I mean, there was never coves put in, and you guys, when the county built the road. And that's, before my time, and what I understand from talking to people, it was never built for that. It was just punch in a road, because you weren't living back there permanently. It was just give them what, they weren't even gonna gravel it, but the previous road superintendent said, if we don't even put gravel on it, it's just gonna blow apart, because it's super sandy out there. So they did just made a trail back in.
Yeah, no, and I never.
And now we're dealing with this problem now, what, eleven years later?
Yeah, probably eleven years ago.
Well, I think the other, the other, my limited knowledge of this road too, was wasn't there an irrigation line down underneath the road that's too shallow, there's a way that?
I thought so.
I mean, that, I mean, not saying that that can't be moved, I'm just saying that that's part of the reason why it didn't continue before, it was always like, there was the right of way.
Except that wasn't on there.
But I think the big thing that we are gonna go forward with, what we probably need to do is like Scotty said, probably establish the right of way.
Yeah.
And then probably figure out how much room we need, if we wanna cut it back, you know, do some kind of a cut fill balance. If you gotta build a road up, and you're gonna use it from cutting your back slope, so that way we can work with the landowners on if, you know, they'll grant. Land, or if you gotta purchase it, what it's gonna cost, and then what utilities would have to get moved to create that line, and that's part of it. But I mean, if we're gonna move forward, then that's where we're gonna have to start probably. So it's basically a mile in there?
Whatever, or more. Dave, is it about three quarters, probably about three quarters of a mile worth of problem, Dave? About one mile to the corner, no, give or take. And if you do it, you gotta come around that corner, because that corner holds a lot of water every spring, so.
Yeah.
And then we fix that spot, then there'll be another spot further south, and then another spot, and then. Where does it end?
Well, I think what you have to do, if you're gonna go through with this, is you'd have to just build the whole mile, I mean, like, you're gonna build it, I mean, is this something the county would do on their own?
Well, yeah, but we could build the first, well, not on that much, oh, so you build that first mile and went west, but then going south, right in that corner, that's a really bad.
Yeah, that holds water.
It holds water like crazy.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to come around the corner, and then now you're gonna, who's to say, two years from now, or whatever, there's not another issue going south a little bit. Can I point something out on that now, of the corner you're talking about? Because that's where my land is. So right here is that corner he's talking about where it holds water, you can see how it's low right there. And there's a section, you know, an unapproved section line going this way, this is my land here. And, I mean, it wouldn't take much of a cut on that section line this way, and that corner would drain. Right now, it's, it's higher in here, and this is Van Beek's, but it, it, you know, it kinda fills up and then it goes over through theirs like this, but. We can cut down on that section line just a little bit, and that, it would drain that way. It wouldn't take much money at all to do that.
Yeah, because I drove through three feet of water, like, two, three feet up to my door, and I had coal there, and it don't drain there, it's just. Here, I got another guy here wants to put his, this is, this is Darryl Van Beek. Darryl?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you're at the meeting, boy, here's your commissioner's right in front of you.
What does the light fall there?
Okay, there you go, you're on, you're on, you're all sitting there listening to you.
Okay, uh, guys, just wondering if there's ever gonna be any gun, should everyone's going back there? I guess getting back there with trucks through that corner, where you try to go south, it's kind of a lower spot, and it's always one route. It's getting to be a pain in the ass to get in there, the trucks are starting to sink. And I guess it's definitely helped us, right, to get that road built up going back there.
Tell me you got your place back there, you might be going back there.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I also got lots of land back there. I'm gonna be eventually, I mean, the other lawsuit is gonna be, I actually would like to put a house back there. And like Dave said, it's a, it's a pain in the ass to get in and out of there, where the snow flies. I hope, yeah, I hope. Because he, if there's ever gonna be any gun, I'm not sure, sure help, there's stuff could be done.
All right, well, thanks for your input, Darryl, let's get something else, Dan.
And then, and then, Darryl, you guys got that land all the way along, the irrigation pipe comes across the road, there were various, and then you guys own that land, and you own the land further to the west where the fence is up.
Yeah.
And cutting them hills down.
Yeah, 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 and, and going back there was like, 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 conways and stuff, that's, the headers, you know, they hit going across, and. It's just, it's kind of a nuisance, uh, it always has been, yes, but. Yeah, we got lots of land back there, and it'd be nice to have a decent road to go back, back there, to eat back there, so.
All right. Well, if that's all, then, I mean, thanks for your input. I guess, just for the sake of moving forward, everything, I, I think, you know, the first thing you have to do is you gotta establish the right of way to see what. You know, and then even then, maybe, you know, we got Mike Rovinius coming in this afternoon, and we just have his input on it, see. You know, another thing to do would probably be to establish what we wanna build the road to, so we know how much dirt we need, because then you can figure out how much. You know, you try and steal it from the back slope, obviously, it'd be the easiest thing with strakers, probably. You know, because we don't even know to go to the adjoining landlords if we need to get land, how much we need, or what utilities may or may not even be in the way, so. I would say, before we start anything, we'd have to go out and just kind of get an engineer's assessment of, you know, some survey data about. So is that mostly Larry Emmer's land on both sides?
No, Larry's on the north side all the way back, and then Van Beek's, Darryl here owns the rest of it, pretty much, except for Seabers has got some back there.
And Darryl's okay with us taking the line out of his if we have to.
You hear that, Darryl?
I can't hear anything.
They're asking you if it's okay if it takes some of your dirt to build that road up.
Yeah, I don't see why not, you know. I don't know, do we gotta take space now, or what?
Well, that's where I don't think we need to speak to you yet right now, we don't know, but I mean, if you got, I mean. I mean, Larry's told me before he wouldn't have a problem with helping out, and I don't wanna put him to a certain level, but. Same with Darryl, I mean, obviously, Darryl's at least considering helping out, so if you got those guys willing to consider, I think it's worthy enough to just go out and evaluate it, and. Then with the dirt quantities and the culverts and things like that, we can put a cost to it, and then we just, that's where you make a decision from, so. I would say this afternoon, Dave, we'll probably have our engineer look into it, put it on, put it on his list or something to go over. Get a survey crew and start moving forward with some information at least, so.
Yeah, there's, there's four of us, Larry's all in, and he's. And back here, and you got Darryl, that's four.
Well, I, I think it's worthy enough to move forward with, so we'll, we'll bring it up with the engineer this afternoon, if you wanna come back after lunch if you're can, I mean, I don't have time.
I don't wanna come back, I, that's the last time I'm coming.
Right, but I, I think, I think we should just move forward.
One-time deal, I got four guys, I came last time myself, he's sitting back here, he's on the phone, and Larry said it's okay, so let's move forward, I'm done, I'm done.
Well, I think we're on the agreement that we should really.
We gotta survey it first, yeah.
Move forward with that and see what comes out.
Good, thanks, David. Good, thanks, Eric.
All right, thanks, guys.
Good, thanks, Darryl. Yep, yep, we'll call you.
Move that three-phase line, you do not wanna do that, I'll tell you that, right? Because either you gotta put it under them, or you're gonna have to move the whole thing way out.
Right, but you guys, you know, one thing about it, once you, once you know all the information, it might be easier to take more to the south side. Maybe you don't have to, you know, maybe we can do just enough to, we, there's no issue with then taking more to the south side, you know, that's why getting an engineer involved in that who's been doing that. At least gives you some information, some ideas, and then.
It might be worth checking with Ken, because that line's got issues anyways, uh, both Larry and I, one leg of that power is real low voltage, and it. And then I'm adding a couple hundred horsepower to our pump site down there, and Ken knows it, and they're gonna, they have in the plans to do some improvements. I don't know what those improvements are and where along there, but it might be that they're doing some improvements anyways on that line and changes and stuff.
Might be a good idea, might be a good time, but, you know, I mean, if that works out, those are the things you gotta get your information together before you go there.
Dale, Dale, Ken, I mean, I've been talking to him the last few weeks about what we're changing, and they got equipment on order and stuff.
Well, like I said, you know, we got Mike coming in with the county council, and we'll kind of put him up to it and see if he can give us some ideas or information.
Because who knows where that, eleven years ago, they probably just tried to go off the section line, the existing road and line it up, but you could be off five, ten, fifteen feet. And that could totally change everything else, so.
If you look at the road going in there, the road comes straight all the way, then look at the jog right by Larry's, out the jog's way out. It's supposed to be cut back in and go straight that way, they should be way to the north.
Well, and that's the thing, you don't have to put the road right on the section line, it just has to be in the right of way, so, you know, like you said, there's no guarantee that where anything thirty-three feet is right, so.
I mean, yeah, if you're willing, yeah, if, if, if moving the three-phase line's that big of a deal, but that, like I said, if you look at the road that goes back, first mile there, that's way up north, and then it jogs way around Larry's farm, head south, well, that's not straight, you can see that with the naked eye, but. Where is it really supposed to be, is it supposed to be way to the north there, because that, you, that's where, like you said, where is the road at?
Right.
I've seen that fence moved three times already, back today, this guy surveyed it, and that guy surveyed it, when Larry and Greg were fighting, they moved, Larry moved it this way, then moved it back that way, then. Where is it supposed to be? He's moved the fence three times, I get, he didn't wanna move it, yeah.
That's right, like you said, Larry had no problem with the fence being moved, but he said he wasn't doing it, he not, but, absolutely.
I thought he just liked moving fence.
Right, well, I don't, I don't think he likes it anymore, but he's all the way he talks, so.
He's moved it now.
All right, well, for the sake of time, like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with it, we'll get some more information, or we're gonna keep moving forward.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, if you look at that road going straight to the jog way from south, south side, as far as you can look at that.
Well, thanks for coming in, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, we can move forward, I think, with the pipeline setbacks, we're close enough to it. So I, I had this put on the agenda because it's been brought up by several people. And I also talked to the county commissioner from McPherson Company down in Eureka, where they are, they're working similar to like we are, and, um. And they're moving forward with setbacks, because in the event that the pipeline does go through, one thing Hammond County doesn't have, I went through the ordinance, but we just really don't have anything. And I peeled through a lot of state's entry code and, uh, and PSC information, all, you know, their administrative rules, and. And there's not, it's, it's not like the wind farms and some of the other stuff, where there's kind of like a state minimum, and you can either honor that or go further. I didn't find a lot, I'm not saying they don't exist, but I didn't find a lot in places I went to. So I did get some information from some other counties, and it does seem to me that precedence is allowing the counties to kind of regulate this on their own. I don't know what we did with Dakota Access Pipeline, but people are wondering what our setbacks are, especially mostly from occupied residences with this pipeline. And so that's why I just wanted to bring it up, at least for discussion, see if anybody's got any ideas. It seems to me, McPherson County, I know for sure, has a one-mile setback from occupied residences. They also have a one-mile setback for solar panels, wind towers, everything is one mile from occupied residence, so. That's what they told me, and then, uh, then there was one in Nebraska, I took a picture of it, so I wouldn't.
So is it just occupied or unoccupied?
Well, they have a variety, so here's, just, just to give you an example, this was a, um, this was in Nebraska, so they have minimum separation distances for a, what they call hazardous liquid pipeline. From the city limits or incorporated city, not less than two miles. From church schools, nursing homes, long-term care facilities, or hospitals, not less than one half of one mile. Only half mile? That's, I mean, that's, and this is just one county, so, uh, from a public park or public recreation area, not less than one quarter of one mile. From any occupied structure, not less than a thousand feet, and from a confined animal feeding operation or facility, not less than one thousand feet. And then their major, like, transformers, electrical transmission stuff, anything over like sixty-nine KV is not less than a thousand feet. So I'm just giving you some examples of the little bit of information that I have, and I would recommend that Hammond County probably does come up with some minimum setbacks. I don't, I'm not expecting it to happen just at this meeting, but I know we do have some guests, and I told them they were allowed to have some input on it, because they're stakeholders in the project, so. If anybody wants to come up, then.
Good morning, guys. Thanks for letting us come in here and speak about this. Yeah, the pipeline is about a quarter mile from my yard. And then my son has a place where he's gonna put a house on, and that's about a half a mile, so it'll be between the both of us. And that, in my mind, is just too close, and when I've talked to them about it in the past, they just don't, they don't get it, they don't care, they just want, that's where they're gonna put it, and that's the only thing. And now, we haven't been talking, they haven't contacted me in probably a couple months, because they're just gonna do their thing, and they're gonna try to get it where the, uh, you sign or not. So we have lawyers in place, and I think we're waiting to be served the paper for, for letting them survey us, for letting them survey our land, which we're not letting them do right now. But the setbacks, in my mind, if you set it a mile, it's still gonna be way too close. So I recommend if you set it at least two or three, because if you have to go to court and fight, maybe then they'll say, well, if it comes up to a mile, then we have to settle for that. But if you go with a mile, maybe they're gonna wanna go down to a half a mile. Make them work a little harder for it, give them, take a little more. And then you also mentioned on, on, towards our, being lived at right now, there's plenty of them out there, who's to say down the road that someone isn't gonna move in there? Because the way things are going, you have people who love their country all the time. So I don't know what you guys wanna do, but my recommendation, I would recommend three miles, but you have to, you guys talk about where you wanna go, or, I mean, I wouldn't go in that's two, in my opinion, a mile isn't far enough. For, even certain things like that, but I, I think we need to do something, because someone is not playing, they're not fooling around, they're gonna have their ducks in a row, they're gonna come at us, and if we don't have something in line, it might not work, but at least you have something to stand up in court and say, here's what we do, here's what the people want. We need to take this serious, so that's all I have to say, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good morning, guys, thanks for having us. Um, I'm not sure if you guys have all heard about, um, Satarchia, Mississippi, they had a rupture back in, was it twenty-twenty, or has it been more recent? Um, anyway, it might be a good idea for you all to view the video, there's a video that they put together after. This was all over with the first responders, the EMS, people in the community, just what they went through with a carbon pipeline rupture. It's, it's different than a lot of other ruptures, a lot of you who sit on our fire voluntary fire, I know are trained, but there's different things, different protocols that have to be followed. And what we're finding is these carbon pipelines aren't, aren't upfront with the communities after coming through, they're not telling them what could happen. So I have some information here that I'd love to give to, um, the commission, if you would go through it and then take time, either ask the commission together or individually, to, to watch the, it's like an hour and ten minutes, but it's worth your time. Just so we kind of know what we're dealing with, and, um, I'm with Kevin, this pipeline is going right to the heart of our home section, very close to dwellings, all of our neighbors. And I think that's one thing that needs to be involved too, is our neighbors, just because I say it's okay to have a pipeline in my property, um, if there's a rupture, that's gonna affect my neighbor. And so they should know what's coming through the neighborhood, and right now, nobody knows anything. We don't know anything, in fact, we don't even have a current map of where it's exactly going to be located on our property. So we are with, you know, just kind of with, with what Kevin said, as far as, um, we were served by stomach about a week ago on a, on a Sunday evening, we had a, somebody come to our door, serving us papers, that if we don't sign a voluntary, um, not a use of it, but a voluntary survey, then they would, then we will have a court date in twenty-one days. So our legal counsel is working. So, our legal counsel is working on that right now, so this isn't going away, they're here and they're gonna, they're gonna fight us on this. And so, um, I guess all we can do is legally prepare ourselves, but we appreciate all that the commission is doing to, um, for the safety, for the landowners' rights of Evans County. So, if I can get this queue. And the information is on here as far as the website, where you're able to look at the video and more information and whatever, so it's out there. So, I'd appreciate if you guys could, could take a peek at it.
Erin, if you could give it to me actually.
Not sure. Is there anybody else here that wants to say anything on setbacks, pipeline? I guess, you know, the only thing I will say or whatever is that with Evans County, to my knowledge, I mean, I did look into our own ordinances or see if there was a resolution passed to DAPL or anything like that, I don't know why RC has that, but just looking at the state's entry code. There isn't much, I don't, there's nothing in that ordinance book that we have. So, if we were going to do something, it would be like we were creating a new ordinance or it'd be just like any other process, we have to probably have a draft and initial first reading, probably have a public hearing after, you know, it would be just like any other ordinance issue like we've had, so. You know, it's not something to probably be made in haste, but that being said, I mean, this pipeline is coming sooner rather than later, so. It's not, I mean, if we're gonna do something, it needs to be done now, where, I mean, you can't sit on it forever.
Well, even if we have something with DAPL, this is totally different pipeline, so.
I would, I would, I would agree with that, I'm just saying for the sake of like a pipeline setback, I do not know of any in Evans County. If there is one, if there was a resolution passed by the previous commissioners and RC has one or something, it wasn't in that court that we have, so. That's all I'm saying, for the sake of information, we're basically creating one, especially if you're gonna consider this a different pipeline than even DAPL, then you're basically creating a CO2 pipeline setback, so. Like I said, I just brought it up for the sake of discussion, more than anything, that it's something we need to continue to look into and, um, do some more research, more information, there are counties that have done stuff, so it's not like they're reinventing the wheel, it's just where do we land on, you know, what we think is good, or who's done enough information or research to come up with something that makes sense, so. It's something that I would, uh, I guess, challenge all of you in the meantime, here in the near future, to do some research or ask around or whatever contacts or sources you guys have or who you're working with to, you know, see what information you can get and and like I said, I do have some information, I'd be more than happy to forward it to you in an email, because that's the way I got it, so I mean, so we got something to start off with. Going out there, but it's a conversation that needs to be had because it's, it's a question that continues to be asked, what are our setbacks? And I don't have an answer because this is something totally new in Evans County too, so we don't have an ordinance board, I know, so.
We want to, not to change subject, but being Skylar's still here, do we want to address the issue into cattle crossings? Even though he's coming in this noon yet, but he's here and we have some time.
We can, I mean, is there anybody else that has anywhere to put on setbacks? Not, we'll just move forward.
I would just recommend not to take too long because, uh, one thing goes in PSC and start through process.
Right, that's why I would kind of say we have to, you know, it's something that we'll probably have to get on pretty fast, I don't know if we want, maybe even consider having a special meeting between here and October. If you get enough information, I don't wanna say something now because, right, if you guys find enough information, we wanna start putting something together, I would say let's probably do it just for, and for the sake of something too, because obviously they're trying to put the project together. It's not really fair to be creating rules, you know, I mean, we're doing the best we can with the information we have, so I'd say maybe loosely plan on that, uh, maybe contact you guys or have RC contact you in a week or two and see if you have any other opinion changes, something that merits a meeting, and we'll kind of go from there.
Just keep in mind, it's not just the idea of having a pipe underground, it's the odorless gas that's a danger. That goes out a mile, it travels a mile real fast, it's not very far. So, you get the first responders out there or anybody else, you'll have dead cattle, you'll have dead neighbors, it's just, it's very dangerous. It's not that we're so against development, it's just that this is not a safe environment to be in when it's that close to our city.
Yeah, if you watch that video, it's, I mean, I hadn't watched it before, it was sent to me a, a few weeks ago and it's been busy. But, I mean, it's telling because it's told from the first responders, the law enforcement that were there that dealt with it, first, first account. So, you know, you can watch it and draw your, your opinion from it, but like Kevin said, it's dangerous.
It doesn't leave, it sits, if it sits in the lower areas like fog, like you take a heavy fog morning where it just sits, that's what this will do. You can't see it, you can't breathe it, you don't know it's there. And then if you got a tractor that's making hay or anything in that area, it will suck the oxygen and it'll kill it. And by that time, it gets too late for any intervention or animal. So, and then how is a first responder supposed to come in and tackle that? Who wants to set something to that problem?
Well, that's the other thing, like if they pipe it underground and, and out in Dakota there, who knows where it's gonna come out?
That's, yeah, I'm not smart enough to that, but I asked the same question, well, it's not just a state ordinance, it's very erosion, it's gonna eat away at stuff, it's just not gonna sit there and be ate all over.
Well, one other thing I will add too, talking to the commissioners about this, so another thing you consider when your research is, is what you think is appropriate depth is too. That is something else that the counties have been, you know, I mean, they've already said they have a certain depth, if you're comfortable with that or whatever, but if you feel that, I mean, in your research, if you find out other things, bring it forward, because right now, we basically, we don't have exactly.
Four feet is good for cover.
Four feet of cover, I believe is what it is, so that's where, I'm just saying, like, that's a part of, if we're gonna do a setbacks process, then that's probably a part of the process too. Whatever information you have, start gathering it and we'll, uh, we'll do a forward on it as soon as we can.
Thank you, that's a, a great thing to consider also, and a lot of you guys here are farmers that have gotten big equipment stuck out in the field and when you get done, how far down you are. You're over that pipe, I tell you about, where, a lot of times are, it's below four feet. So, I would appreciate if you guys had researched that and maybe we could come up with a better depth, that would be safer.
You have erosion to consider too, there are places where your road a half foot off or something, and then you're at three, three and a half.
Well, you guys, you guys, your homework is sent here now, so.
Thanks, people.
Yep.
Yes, thank you much.
Okay, well, being no more discussion on that subject, yes, we got another half hour here, so. Skylar, uh, Josh, you wanna bring up the pictures again, so Skylar, this was the cattle guard that you and I were discussing with Jerome Lawson?
Yep.
And, uh, you know, going, going forward while we're driving, well, we're gonna have to discuss this commissioner too, is, is how we wanna handle this and what I, what I mean by that is if, I wanna do some more research, because obviously I think there's probably paperwork on this, I, I would assume there is rather than there isn't, but whatever agreement is in place, if it's just verbal, if we're gonna honor it, then we need to get it on paper, if there's alternatives to it, like, I know I spoke to Jerome and he said he would be in favor of getting rid of the cattle guards, but he doesn't see a viable fencing scenario, like that's the reason for cattle guards, it's gonna be tough. Doesn't mean it's impossible, but just me and him conversing on the phone, because I told him, I'm like, you know, the county's gonna spend ten to fifteen thousand dollars replacing these in the next five to ten years. I mean, you could almost help out with the cost of the fence, you could just get the, I mean, the county would be even better spent that way, because if I'm a landlord, I'm gonna make the county replace the cattle guards if it's up to me rather than spend on the fence. But I'm just saying, if you're gonna be reinvesting the money, and then you always have to maintain these, when they break, we have to fix them, when they fill with dirt, we have to clean them up. If you could eliminate them and create a fencing scenario that would work, it'd be better not to take that money and, and offer some kind of coche on the fence and then just wash your hands of it, like, like dumb deal, like it's their fence, whatever, and that's just a spitballing idea, but when you talk about upwards of twenty to thirty thousand dollars to maintain these cattle guards, I mean, if that's gonna be, but, I mean, and that was just an estimate, but it was ten to fifteen, I mean, it was, I mean, you, I mean, because that's just the top, you know, these have concrete, like a butt head, I mean, if that's starting to fail, I mean, I'm just saying, this thing is, it's kind of a scenario where the county got himself in a perpetual maintenance job and that's where maybe working out some kind of offensive deal would even be better if possible, just to, because then you would need another, it'd be, you'd just be dumped, they would own the fence, when it's over, they would maintain it, it's theirs, dumped, but I don't know if that's possible, because like I said, there's several landlords involved, you know, it's just kind of armchair quarterbacking this one from a couple of phone calls, but I know one thing, getting, getting ourselves more clarity on these handshake deals and coming to conclusions on them rather than perpetual maintenance, because it's gonna be a problem for every commissioner and every road superintendent from here till the end of time if we don't solve it. And then every time they change his hands, you guys get re-elected or pass away or move on, then you have the same argument all the time, Jerome said he's had it several times, where, you know, you get a new superintendent, you get a new, oh, well, that's not ours, well, it turns out this specific one might actually.
Yeah, you have to quit them hatchet agreements, everything's gotta be written down nowadays, whatever you agree on, otherwise, nobody knows what's going on.
And that's where just going forward, I mean, I mean, I don't really have a problem with even honoring this agreement, because every information I've had on it makes sense. But if there isn't an agreement actually written down and we're gonna honor it, then we need to put it, we need to do the right thing to get it down on paper. And if you're not gonna do it, then we need to remedy it somehow, where we're not just leaving a landlord in the lurch either, like, well, we're just tearing them up and it's up to you to fix fence, because I mean, if there's agreements in place, I mean, it's just, it's, I mean, this one makes sense, all the information's there, everybody's agreed with it. I mean, like I said, I even found the welding mark from nineteen sixty-four, so it's all coming together then, it's like, yeah, this was a deal that. And I know Al, I think Al is the one, Al and Bart, I would put the blade edge on there, that, you know, they went on, fixed it with whatever they had that day and it's like, well, it's getting pretty bad shape even with the spots they fixed, so. I guess, my opinion for the meantime, is that I don't see any reason to disagree with the fact that the county's responsible for it. So, in the meantime, Skylar, if something comes up with that, that's our obligation to tell them, instruct them otherwise, unless somebody's got a difference of opinion, that's fine, you guys.
So, just on this one or every cattle guard?
Just on this one, because I know for a fact that the century code states that landlords are responsible for their cattle guards when they request them and I'm, I would have to double check into the graphic one, but I got it, because I think my dad was commissioner at that one. And he said that they, that was quite a part of their deal, it was like, we'll let you put it in, but it's your cattle guard, you have to take care of it. Where this one was more of a nugget to get easement, where the other ones are more like, you can put it in, but it's yours. So, for the time being, I would say these specific ones are our obligation.
So, where does this one lead to?
This one would go like, if you know where Max Gross's place is, these are straight east of Max, yeah.
Yeah.
And then like Rod Dietz has like that.
Right, yeah.
And then we find that.
That's where, where Dietz used to let.
Yeah, the old Dietz.
Well, that Dietz is not, no.
No, he's just, they got cattle.
But that's, that's, but, yeah, yeah. Still main road today.
It's actually, it's, it's eighty-third street is what it is.
Eighty-third, yeah.
So, it is the main road.
Yeah, we laid it there, it's a, it's a graphic road.
Still the one they got.
I will add, I will add.
That's the only one, all the way up by Ron, right, yeah.
I will add one thing though, this cattle guard is destroying this road. The reason why I say that is because the cattle have paths right along the road shoulder and there's spots where it's washed out fifteen feet deep, twenty feet wide, because then cattle paths over time, that's where the ditch water runs and you can just see where the cattle paths are, it's washed out. And I think that it's destroying, I mean, the road isn't impacted right now, but it's, I mean, it's probably outside the right way, but it's, it's, and I honestly think if we can, I think we should get them cattle guards out of there and find an alternative solution. Ends the maintenance deal, I mean, even like I said, even if the final thing is to do a similar deal and offer some kind of, take what you were gonna do with the cattle guards and put it into a fence to get rid of these things, whatever, but I think we need to come to a different, different solution on the cattle guards, because I think it's gonna end up destroying the road, eventually it's gonna wash in, until it starts washing into the in slope and now you're gonna be rebuilding a road because of cattle guards and replacing cattle guards, I just, if we can come up with a solution, I think we should, but we gotta work with these folks too, I mean, it makes sense, but. But anyway, for the time being, Skylar, if you do get a phone call, I don't know if it breaks or fills in again or something, I got to do that. Especially till we find some kind of. Joey, you wanna just kind of make a note of that too? I mean, I'll do some research too, but just kind of, maybe we'll forward it a little bit or something, see if she can pull up something, some kind of easement.
I can, uh, I got eighty-fourth street out here, it's in terrible shape, there's a bus route and everything out there. You go past that, south of the airport and the first road to the west. And I, it's, I had several calls already on it, they said you can't hardly drive it and they said the bus is on it and, you know, and they're barely, you know, going. They don't even remember last time they played with on it and they, I don't know who the boys be playing that, but yeah, evidently.
Eighty-fourth is just, are their biggest concerns of, like, washboards or?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty tough.
Yeah.
I mean, even, I mean, even if it's dry and it's not gonna do a lot of, it's gotta get, something's gotta get done at least in the meantime, because it's getting pretty rough. Because I know eighty-second, I was back there, because when I went and checked this out, I drove eighty-fourth out there and it was pretty rough. And then I drove eighty-second back and I believe that's the break between Sean and Dave Ellison.
Yep.
And Ellison does eighty-fourth, Sean does eighty-second, because I got a call that said, oh, eighty-second got bladed, it's in really nice shape, how come they didn't do eighty-fourth? Well, that's the difference with the, you know, it's not his route, so eighty-second was in pretty nice shape, but it's horribly sandy. I mean, I, I'm almost wondering if we should try and maybe blend some of that heavier gravel we got left on some of the roads, you know? And I mean, I know it'd have to come from probably erratic or from Calvin bushes, it's gonna be a drive, but I think maybe trying to blend some of that heavier road gravel.
Nineteenth is really bad too, I mean, I just farmed up there, north of Rodney Jacobs, oh my goodness, does that road washboard, it's horrible, it's absolute, and I know it's dry and.
Yeah, I mean, and then moisture, it's killing us.
Though, that road is rough, Nineteenth, wow.
But I know you.
Nineteenth going north?
Well, it's, it's all the way from highway eight, uh, thirteen north, that road is, it's washboard, just terrible washboard. You know, and I know.
Forty-four going north?
Nineteen, thirteen.
Highway thirteen?
Yep.
And then Nineteenth Avenue going north?
Okay.
That, you know, that's a far, that's a far market.
That's north side.
You're talking like Saint Michael's Road basically, right?
Of thirteen.
Yeah.
Saint Michael's Road, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That.
But yeah, eighty, eighty-fourth, you're gonna have to.
Yeah, well, we can get on to it, we haven't been doing a lot of blading because it's dry.
I get it, I know, get it.
We're doing these other things and when we, we blade them when they're super dry like that, you're just adding to the fire. But yeah, I mean, that's the best thing we can do at this point is just take the.
Well, that's, that's what you said, if rain there one day and you throw the blade in the out and.
Oh, there's twelve hundred miles of road that.
Yeah, I know, I know, I did.
We can't get to.
But I know, I know the bus driver contacted me too and he had to replace a mirror or two because it was so rough, I drove out there and it is, it's.
Well, when these people contact you, the best thing you could do is have them just contact me directly.
Right.
That way that's, I mean, because now it's been how many weeks and stuff like that, so just have them contact me directly.
Well, the big thing is too, is I didn't know about that break, you know, where eighty-second, because when I hit eighty-second got bladed, I'm like, I might not say that, you expect a blade tomorrow. I didn't realize that that was the blade break too, I always thought it was eighty-fourth and then south was a break, well, I didn't realize eighty-second was. So, when eighty-second got bladed, I'm like, oh, he's probably doing it right now or he's gonna do it tomorrow, but then here I didn't know that. So, that's why I didn't break that four right later, because I thought, I'm not gonna call and find out he's literally blading him on calling, but it didn't happen, so.
No, like in eighty-second, when we did get a little bit of moisture, I get just a little bit of something down there right around that curve, got a washboard. Then I hit the first mile eighty-second, that's all I had time for, like, what else was working? Then I got a call, wondering why we didn't go all the way down. And then eventually, we had a break and the blade guy went out to eighty-second and hit that, the rest of the way.
Well, you, you would rather have the consumer call you then?
Absolutely, that's the quickest way to break it, that's what my job is, to take them, if you have a concern or something, just have them call me. Eventually, we'll get into that path, if they're calling me directly and then if I have a concern, then I can bring it up.
I can say the one you wanted to deal with.
Well, that's what you're paying me, that's what the deal.
There you go, okay.
That's, that's my job there.
But yeah, I mean, I know, I mean, I know it's been dry, it's, but some of the roads are getting almost unravable, so we're just gonna have to do them. I mean, even if it does create some power, then when it rains again, I'll try and.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're working on.
Right, can you just, um, do teeth on those, when they do that?
Yep, they're, they're. So, Dave Ellison's been had him on since we put him on his machine and loves him, doing a great job with him.
Well, like I said, I called you that time about eighty-ninth, the name Strasburg, going west, and then Dave came out the next day, cut it with those edges and it was great, but it was so dry, it just made a sandbox in the middle of it. I mean, it made it smoother, but you could tell that it just, when it's dry like this, it just doesn't matter.
Unless you're much, blows away then, you know.
Right, I mean, that's the idea, like, you can do too much blading when it's dry, but then that road was almost unravable, so I needed to get them. Uh, another question, Skylar, is this, uh, Wes Maslow water line permit?
Yep.
Was he wanting to trench across the section line or what?
He did want to, but I told him he had to board it.
Oh, so, okay, that was our, because that's the utility permit, it's the permit.
The permits.
Says we have to.
Well, the permit doesn't, it just says hook up the water line, it doesn't say whether it's gonna be trenched. It just says hook up the water line, it doesn't say whether it was gonna be trenched or bored. That's why I was wondering the question, because I, you know, I mean, the main reason we wanted to do it, boring with some of these, like, we didn't want to disturb and make trails around, I mean, were you out there, was it like just like two trap trailer?
I didn't even go out and look at it, because.
That's supposed to keep that policy built till we got.
Well, I just, I hate to make these guys bore on everything, like, and some of these trails are pretty buggy around the middle of nowhere.
So we must down the road some different.
Right, but I mean, if you're gonna dig eight feet deep through a flat section line, it's gonna probably be deep enough for the road ditch anyway, I mean, I'm not.
Well, they don't, they're not trenching that deep, but uh,
well, I would say so, if you're gonna do real water, then. Then the trouble is too, is I mean, the reason we have to board is because they need to make sure that you were, you know, even right now, are they gonna be any deeper boring and then they are trenching it right now is my point, because it's just like a flat, just prairie trail. Because you're gonna have an issue with cutting a ditch and then having a lot of water, when you're too shallow, you're gonna have the same problem where you're bored and are trenching it is. But I'm gonna bore it fifteen feet deep on a flat surface, they're gonna go there sixteen feet like they're supposed to, so. I'm just wondering, that's something we should reevaluate, is we're not making a board every section line, like even out in the middle of nowhere, like, I, I wonder if that's, you know, feasible.
That policy might be terrible on.
Right. I mean, the main reason is because a lot of these, especially a section line, that's what we use, we want it to be boring, because we didn't want to be disturbing it, making it a dear, cause of problems. That's probably why should I stick to it anyway, but I think. So you're gonna have to bore this one anyway?
That's what I told him, and he asked, why, we have to bore out in the middle of nowhere, and I was like, that's the policy that's in place. So.
Well, I do like the minimal disturbance on it, though, that's one thing I do like.
Well, then the next, then the next guy's gonna say, well, you let him bore, why are you gonna let him trench, why can't I trench?
Well, the big thing was, we just didn't want disturbance through these high traffic areas, you know, I'm the one that, you know, but still exist.
Anything in the basements, well, shoot out.
Right, like, I mean, my point is like, your, your absolute, your profile, the roads are certified type of roads, trenching through it's just absolute going up. Prairie trail that two guys use, that's never been touched other than been driven on.
Should that be specified on that permit, just for?
Well, that's what I'm, that was the safety discussion, I think we should stick to what we're doing for now, but Skylar told the board, we don't have a good reason to change it with the. But going forward, we should maybe probably leave it up to discretion of the road superintendent.
Or their deed things.
Right, you're out there, it's like, holy cow, this thing is.
He shouldn't have to bring everything down.
Well, I'm just saying, if it's like, it's two inches higher than the ground around it, it's never been touched other than driven on, you wanna let somebody trench a powerway or through it or something, I, I just don't know if it's that big of a deal. I mean, because even the depth, my point is, is you have a flat surface, you bore it eight feet deep. And you go and you cut a ditch into it thirty years from now and you cut down three feet, it's still gonna have to probably be rebarred anyway, so, boring didn't lead to disturbance, but it's not like it creates a depth.
I think it's a good idea, because like M D U come, they bore it along my field, they have to, they have cars. Or wherever they trenched in, they trenched in, all the water drained and it's got much deeper than.
Right, well, I said, I'm not totally against the boring, I just wondered that somebody should evaluate, but for now, let's just keep it the way it is, it's fine, so. I mean, we can work on this permit later, come this morning. So you told the board and you just?
Told the board, he asked what, what happened if you opened and cut it? Told him that he probably never get another permit from us again.
That's embarrassing.
There you go.
We can't say we find them, because it's not fine enough.
No.
Well, I think.
No, you did, you're right.
It's a respect level too, they're just making sure you're not disturbed, but anyway, I think that's the right to do, so. Other than that, I think everything else is more so after lunch, I guess.
Well, we got, I can touch on a few things, we're gonna forget one.
We got about ten minutes.
I'll be back, I'll, I'm gonna take off.
Well, do you want, that's fine, Skylar's just gonna touch on some little things, but I don't know.
Trees, pretty much, trees is our biggest issue.
Where's that?
Trees, trees in the right.
Little mass at the county and.
Oh.
Well, you're gonna find, there's lots of trees on the right side.
Yes, there is actually, so, I don't know, got a couple minutes or you want to?
We'll take one.
No, I mean, we can be done right at doing if you want. So trees in the right of way is becoming a pretty big issue, not only just safety concerns, but nowadays, starting to overhang and get our equipment, take out mirrors, stuff like that. I'd like some guidance on how you guys want to proceed with this, because technically, I think, I believe in the century code, it's the landowner's responsibility for the trees. It's their responsibility to put thirty-three feet of regular, even though we have the variance with them. So both the landowners and the county have failed miserably.
Yeah.
At upkeep.
Wouldn't disagree with that.
So, we can't rightly put it all on them and like, well, now we're finally gonna make you do it, now, instead of a small tree, it's a huge big cottonwood tree or whatever trees or groups of trees and stuff like that. So, do we want to send out, I guess I'm looking for some guidance on this, how we want to proceed, do we want to cost share with them? Do we want to just take the responsibility on and just get rid of them? Because I don't like trimming trees in the right of way, because if you trim them, five years later, you're gonna go back and have to do it again.
It'd be nice to hear, because they're snowing out there anyway in the ditch, yeah.
Yep, it's all over so close that you can't even wing the snow off, they have to pick their wings up because they're that close, so. Just looking for some guidance on how we want to proceed with this, doesn't mean we have to make a decision today.
No, there's some, there's some really big ones.
Yeah. Big ones, I mean, maybe we can work with the landowners, if we take them down, if they got a place on their property, we can store them to save on hauling costs. Chipping them, I mean, like, when I'm talking taking the tree, everything's gone, the stump's drowned out and we monitor it. Spray whatever little stuff comes up in a few years, you won't be out with it. If they're mowing the ditches now, if they're mobile, when you got a little, little suckling growing, they can mow over it and eventually it's gone.
See, but some people want that, you know, like up by Tom Chonner, you remember a couple of years ago, they were cutting them all down and then Tom Chonner had some up there and they got better, because it was right by their yard. They kinda liked them, but I don't know, they're still on the county right of way, but.
Yeah, we'll see how well they like it.
Going to the yards, you know, to me, going to the yards is one thing, but going there on the main road.
Well, I think.
They should be there.
Because like, I got a call from KJ Moser, I passed it off John, so we were training or something, I did, but uh, I think it was third avenue southeast here. Coming up, I can't remember. I think there was a farm here, one was probably looking at this one, but anyway, the trees are overhanging the road so much that you can't even get a combine or sprayer through. Think in that situation, where you have the roadway impeded, we just need to go up and, whether it's just trim a few things off, just temporarily, just in the short term to get something cleared. And then long-term plan should be like, like this winter, next spring, something. Landowner, county, whatever, we need to get that tree out of there, so we're not trimming it every five years, but, like, when you get a call that somebody's like, holy cow, you're handing in a load of hay through here, we probably just need to go up.
Trim it up.
You know, whatever, if, if we don't have the equipment, you know, you can get a windy wind or type somewhere, you know, go out there and you just handle it short-term wise, just to get, the roadway shouldn't be impacted. You know, like, the right of way is one thing, but that shoulder to shoulder or maybe five feet each way, ten, we should be, just making sure that that's at least cleared, especially for your higher traffic, you know, your taller, your trucks, combines, sprayers, all that stuff. So I, I would say we need to, like, if you get a call, somebody's like, holy cow, or you know when your blades run through this, such as go up, just at least secure the roadway. And then make note of it, we need to probably like, either send letters out or, you know, work out some kind of plan on how to get them along.
Yeah, as of right now, we have, I mean, we have a chainsaw, but we're not, we have nothing to get that high, so we're gonna have to probably hire a contractor to come home and trim them up.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't want guys standing out with a paper or bucket. I think, I think when you got a situation like that, it's probably best to just have a contractor or two in mind that we can call and come in. Some of that stuff will just kind of leave up to your discretion in the short term, like to clear the road. And then the long-term plan, we need to probably work, just almost like fence line encroach, and as we see them, as we, run into them, as they become a problem, you handle, you know?
I think that's what Nick was doing that one winter there, it was open winter and they were going out, cutting a bunch of.
Right, I mean, and that's something too, where, you know, whether, whether we, and maybe we rent a boot truck, I don't know, type winter, go out and do what our, if it just seems like it's overwhelming or needs to be done like today, tomorrow. Then you hire it out and just go get somebody in there to take care of the problem, because maybe we don't want equipment damages, whether it's our own or people around us, so.
Absolutely, so, I always talked with John a month or two ago, we were trying to figure out where we could find some money in our budget to, to just probably hire some contractors to come in.
They're not gonna be cheap.
Nothing in this world cheap any more, so.
Yeah, you're probably looking at a hun, you're probably looking at a hundred and fifty, two hundred bucks an hour, I would assume, with somebody who, I mean, I was.
You know what, and actually, Wendy is expensive, but uh, other contractors might, you know, like Ken brings one in, it might be the time.
We were gonna call around.
And you done it too, yeah.
We were gonna try to get a budget, what we could roughly think we could safely spend. And then just call around and get some prices from some contractors and be like, go at it, is your hourly rate, go at it or we'll let you know when you're.
I think you do, you do have to differentiate between like, like a safety in the right of way and like over the rooftop. Like over the rooftop stuff, when we get calls, that's gotta be handled. Like, I, they can't wait for like a month, like, somebody goes through and they're like, yeah, I busted a headlight off of my, that's, that shouldn't happen. I mean, even if it's up to the responsibility of the landlord to take out the tree, we have a responsibility to the roadway at least, and I think that's where, if you think you can, oh, it's only ten feet tall and you wanna go out there and handle yourself with a piece of equipment, whatever, if, it starts where it's like, wow, it's a hundred feet long on both sides, then bring a contractor in, I mean, as far as budget goes and stuff, I mean, we can work with things like that if we have to bring someone in today, tomorrow.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I guess the third avenue is probably a.
Right, like, we should probably handle that soon, like the next couple of days, week, whatever is reasonable.
And there's a few other spots where the, the blade operators are saying, I gotta start doing stuff.
Well, I think those kind of just get prioritized, and then like your, your tree that's twenty feet off the road that you know is in the right of way and it's not affecting nothing, those are the ones you put down on a list and we handle them as time allows and.
Yep, and that's what this conversation is, to get a, a set so we can keep moving forward, so when it comes up, we, we just have a plan in action, so.
What do you think, Dave?
Uh, I think we gotta wait till Lee Weiss comes back and he'll jump some down, that, that's another thing, he's, he always comes and gets mine wood and that's perfectly legal on it to take it off.
Oh, like when you cut that tree down by your place and stuff? Yeah, I don't, I guess I don't care what they do with the wood, if they wanna dispose of it.
Like for?
Like if they cut some trees down for us, if we have to dispose of the wood or not, I mean, if they wanna take it, dispose of it, I don't know if I have a problem with that, because.
For the contractor?
Right.
My thought is the contractor's gonna be responsible for everything.
Right, but if there's a big enough project, they might want, they might be like, I can't haul all this wood or something, maybe I don't, we either gotta figure out a, chip it and store the chips, or maybe we start a tree pile and.
Like, if, if I was gonna have them chip anything, I'd just have them blow it back in the ditch and let it decompose and that's what they've, they've done a few times, I've seen other counties and townships, they just, they'll come in and they'll chip it and what, what they can chip just gets blown back in the ditch and, leveled off and, I mean, it'll just decompose and makes better tops, so eventually.
Well, I know like what Dave's talking about is there's like a guy or two around Hazelton that they chop up for firewood, so like, you tell him you got some trees to take down, they'll actually take it and, so that'd be the same situation, where you dispose of it, it doesn't really matter, so.
Yeah, I mean, if it gets to be a lot of trees and we can get some, I don't know, we can find a place to dump it and then they can, like, I don't know how the city works with their tree piles, if they let people come up and cut it up for firewood or, you know, that comes to the, how many people do you want involved in this?
Right, well, just because that's where another thing is, if we have to actually supply a spot to get rid of it, or if you're gonna make them get rid of it, that was kind of the question.
If they're gonna contract us, they gotta get rid of it.
I think a lot of the guys that are in this paperwork usually have some kind of a shredder trip or something like that, they can take care of.
I think it takes some pretty decent sized trees, I mean, obviously, they're not gonna take a huge tree, they'll have to dispose of that and then grind the stump. Oh, that's chip result, I don't think, depends on, oh yeah.
Depends on the size.
Depends on the size. Some of them are down from, to like this, to like this.
Cameron, Cameron and you must have a contractor by Lake Isabel, I'm gonna buy them, they got a chipper that's like the size of a truck, it's huge. So I mean, depending on the contractor.
Feed them with the skids, they're just picking in there, and once they start, they have an auto feed system that'll grab onto it, start feeding them.
Well, I guess I would say, in my opinion, in the short term, is if you get a call on somewhere that's hitting stuff, just take care of the road at least, keep the road clear. And then from that point, if it's gonna, you know, a root, a tree that's gonna continue to be a problem, or trees out in the middle of the road, shrubs that are, not affecting the road immediately, but maybe they're taken care of, just start making a list and we'll, I'll take care of one way, the other way, the landlord's gonna do it, or we're gonna do it and bill them, or however the century code allows it, and just take care of them.
Okay, well, I'll see where, where we can come up with some money in our budget, we'll, like third avenue, we're probably gonna have to hire a contractor.
Right, looking, but in the short term, I mean, if it's gonna be something where it's like, five thousand dollars, I mean, we can probably find out your budget or some other, I mean, like, I mean, we gotta take care of the responsibility of this bad.
Yep.
And then, like you said, though, not going out and doing fifty thousand dollars worth of tree work in four years that didn't need to get done, then we can wait and try and budget that in a different scenario.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna journey and go until noon.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back at one, so, let's see if anybody's got anything else to add or be done. Okay. Journey to lunch, back at one o'clock.
You're good.
So, I would like.
Is it okay when we come back, I sit at that desk, that's fair, so I can take notes?
I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you. I am, yeah, I have a personal, I got to meet everybody yet, but, yeah, I was sitting there, I was trying to take notes, I was like, this is not comfortable.
The chair, you mean, the bench?
Marson, can we use this desk?
Did they use the desk at the end? Can that be used?
I think so.
The only reason we have to double check is there's like legality issues, we don't even use it. I'll probably ask Josh or Joe, but I don't think that'd be a problem.
Perfect, awesome, thank you.
I'll call and talk about it, something like that, and I can't get a panel, because I don't know, it's not the volume.
She's out of, uh.
Steve Leonard?
Yes.
Who was that guy that was over there?
Wasn't that, that wasn't that?
There was some guy I was on the corner that built the. He called me.
That wasn't John Everly? He looked just like John, I thought that was John.